That's right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call please.
Nelson.
Here.
Porter. Reed.
Hmm.
Smith. Here. Solomon.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
All righty, yeah, next we have the approval of the minutes, so just a motion to approve the minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty four, council meeting.
Make the motion.
All right, any discussion? Same night, roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
All righty, after next, we have a motion to approve the minutes at the September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, September council meeting. We have a motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll check. Any discussion? Same night, roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All righty, next, we have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as they appear on the worksheets. We have a motion to approve that, please.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Before we start. We borrowed a clamp from Malua, so did we break it and had to replace it?
Ours was probably broken. They had one on hand and they wanted to borrow it and we replaced it. That's what happens. They do that.
Okay, so we, okay, so, because then we bought one too.
Yes.
It's probably not borrowed, it was used and like sort of water main break probably. I think there was a water main break. I'm sorry, I jumped in, but they used it because Malua had one and then you purchased it to replace theirs.
Yeah, that's right. And then we purchased another one because they were both different sizes.
You absolutely need, yeah, there's multiple different sizes of water mains, so you need to keep some on stock and absolutely, I don't know the bill, I'm sorry, I jumped in.
Oh, that's okay, because Dana's not here.
Yeah, no one's. And then the other question was on the water bill. We had a lot of, like, the monthly, um, the monthly water testing, sewer testing.
Yeah.
And so did they add something to the test?
No, that's us, go ahead, April.
That was for several months because I got the invoices, so no, they, they do test them often.
But they test something else now than what we used to. Like, there was another test added. So there was like a forty dollar fine, a forty dollar fee more after, like, April.
Probably some of them are tested differently.
Yeah, we send it to Peoria.
I just think that's always the same, yeah, two paces.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start.
All right, any discussion? Same night, roll call please.
Solomon.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Porter.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
All right, we are gonna have leave of the body. I'm gonna jump down to communications from the mayor and then we're gonna go to public comments. So I do wanna let everybody know, and the city will be involved in this, Truck or Treat will be out at the school, it'll be in the parking lot, on Sunday, October twenty seven, from four to six. If it rains, then it's gonna be inside. So Doug, if you want to attend, you're more than welcome to be there. ACPA is gonna, it's on the agenda for the school board meeting to get the facilities approved. Also, I wanted to let you know, I went and through the attorney sent me the notice, so I posted a notice on the Riley House on Sarah Street, given the bug situation that was there. If you want to update some more during your comments here before the vote, too. And also just a reminder, Columbus State is coming up on the fourteenth, so we are closed on that. Friday, we are doing street oiling here in town, so be vigilant of that. If you go, go driving around, we're gonna be doing that. Then also, there will be a zoned, zoning board meeting on Tuesday, October twenty second, to talk about the storage containers. The last notice was not properly noticed, so we needed to post that as a release favor, so we're kinda doing it. I will also say, I will not be here, I've gotta go to Wisconsin. I'll leave on Monday night and I'll be back Wednesday morning. So Selena, do you like to be mayor from Tim during that time? So, all right. And also, uh, also, another thing is, Christian County Economic Development will be holding a lunch on, at eleven thirty at the seventeenth of this month. Any of you older men are welcome to come, be at the pillars, given that you are elected officials and more, welcome to go. I will actually be speaking about things going on in Assumption. I'm actually speaking with, yeah, Sloan, from Sloan's, so we're gonna.
What's the date on that?
It's on the seventeenth.
This month.
This month. And it's at eleven thirty a.m., so if you'd like to go, just let me know. I have the flyer of the city hall on the bulletin board. So one thing I'm gonna discuss is the housing situation that we have going on in which Assumption. So I've also got a couple of folders, too, that I'm gonna take up there as well, so hopefully get some bites. Then also with that, starting on the seventeen, just, I can't say no, I will become the vice president of Christian County Economic Development. Given that the state of Assumption already has a board seat on the executive team, they have asked if I would like to serve as a capacity of vice president, so I will be doing that. To kinda let you know, every community in Christian County has that right to serve on the board, and only three mayors chose to serve on the board, and it's me, Pena, and Taylorville. So, I, I mean, they do a lot of great things, and there's a lot of great things coming. I think there's some things that can help Assumption down the road. Leave or, I mean, given what the naysayers say, leave or not, companies do look for Illinois. And one thing that we do have is that we got the four lane, the railroad, and we also have some acreage, too, so people, you know, Matt Hart, who's the executive director of Christian County Economic Development, is really out there working it, so. Got some a lot of great things going on, so I'm happy to work with that through the rest of my time. And then also, kinda wanna let you all know that Chief Wade is working on tasers for us. It's a matching grant, so it'll be like one of those things that we're gonna have to probably pay first, and then we will get reimbursed. I have the information on it, but it's around ninety-nine hundred dollars, something like that. Oh, three tasers with ten packages totaling nine thousand four hundred eleven dollars sixty-six, so it's something we're gonna have to probably discuss. I'm happy about it, it seems really good that we're got a chance on getting those tasers. We probably will have to buy the battery packs for them, that might be a couple of grand, but we do have some ARCA money that's left for that. And then also, last but not least, I do wanna give a shout out to Chief Wade. As you all know, he is leaving us. I, I'll, I'll tell you, when I, I was at work and I got a phone call, and it was from Capitol Police, and they were inquiring about Chief Wade, and I wanted to do a reference, Chief Wade did put me down as a reference. And I was, well, to be quite honest with you, I mean, I was livid about it, because I knew, I knew what they, you know, they were calling about his character, how he does on the job, but I was honest, I mean, I, I totally comprehend the job he's done for Assumption, so after I hung up, took a walk, and, you know, I came back and it's like, you know, I'm happy for him, and, you know, and I get it, I, I really do, I mean, I have, I have friends that work as attorneys, that work in politics, and, you know, they last about ten years and then they move on. Not everybody is, I mean, I've got twenty years with my employer, and not everybody's like me. But I, I totally get it, and Wade, Chief Wade has been an absolute godsend. I got on the council in May of twenty seventeen, he kinda got in a little bit before that, we've had ups and downs with past mayors, the community has had ups and downs, but you get that with any chief. I mean, but we have been so fortunate, when you see the news, when you see what's going on in America, we, we don't have those problems. I, I have been to small towns, I, I've been pulled over in Cairo because I had politics on my plate. The cop wanted to know who I was. It's like, you don't do that, but it's, we are so fortunate for what we have, and, and I'm going to tell you, we have had two people reach out to me for police chief. It is my goal to get a police chief hired maybe in November, worst case, maybe December, but we are working on that. We have, I think, a good person that is definitely interested. Scott Woods is helping me, he's advising me, the police chief from Malua, Chief Hale, is helping me, and so is PJ. Cops, you know, same with, you know, political people, nurses, people in the medical field, they all run together in their own fields, so when you call about somebody, they're like, hey, yeah, no, this is a good, not a good person. This is, this is, this is a bad person or whatever. But I have to tell you that I, Assumption, it has been truly a blessing with you, Brian, and for everything that you have done. So with that, we're gonna kind of have a little bit of a discussion. We, Chief Hale's gonna kind of take over the operations. Doug, of course, is still gonna be the school resource officer, so there's gonna be no change there. Went out and I talked to him, thanked him for everything the other day at school. I got there too early, I got there at seven fifteen, so some of the teachers probably thought, it's like, what the world's he, kind of sitting out there in the parking lot. But anyway, I was like, well, he'll get here at some point, and certainly if I saw him, so, but, you know, he's gonna continue to do, to do great things out with Bond, and that's something I'm gonna push for, for the next police chief to continue to do great things, but. Chief Hale, we're going, you know, one of my plans is that we're kinda gonna do similar to what we did with Scott, we're gonna, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in, in paying the village of Malua, you know, you do a thousand dollars a month, we can do more than that, we're gonna open that up for some discussion, but he's gonna kind of talk about some of the things that he's going to do until we get this chief in, so you've got your floor.
Sure.
My name's Chris Al, I've been in Malua, it'll be three years this month, before that I worked twenty-six years in Decatur. And when I started in Malua, I had one part-time officer, and that was all I had. We've since built that up to three full-time officers, including our SOO, and I've got two part-time officers. So I think we've got things pretty squared away and pretty happy with our little department currently. A couple of things that I have concerns with, and, and Brian and I talked a lot on trying to make improvements down here. The temporary reasons that you're probably gonna need somebody in the position of chief is you have to keep up with training and standards board. Once you hire a chief, it may be two to four weeks before training and standards board actually approves them. You'll have to actually hire them and probably be paying them, but they will not approve them until that time. Doug went through this process, I went through it with somebody else who was not certified and then had to get recertified, so it's a, it's a lengthy process, and there's no rhyme or reason on how long they take. One of my guys took two weeks, somebody else took four weeks, it, it's just how they decide to do it, and we can't rush the state on this. We have Luddy, which is the training and standards board site that allows us to maintain who's trained, what training they need to go to, what training they have been to, and keep updated on that. We have ISP with their evidence, somebody has to go over and submit evidence, somebody has to maintain evidence, keep track of evidence. Tickets and reports have to be submitted, Christian County and the state's attorney, somebody to review reports and make sure everything's run smoothly on that, or you complain if, unfortunately, you get something like that. So those are the main things that would have to be maintained by a chief temporarily. I try to come down here and meet with Wade frequently, I'll come in and check with Doug at the school anyway, because those are the things that we normally do, we've got good relationships, we know our departments. One of the things I wanna touch on for you guys, and I'm not in charge of you guys' budgets, I've been blessed that I've got a pretty good board and they've worked with me on budgets, but for some comparables, this last year, our budget was what we expected for an income and what we worked off of as a floating budget, is one million one hundred thousand dollars. From numbers I found online for you guys, your operating budget at balance was one million one hundred thousand dollars for end of April twenty twenty four. So I think we're looking at similar numbers on how you guys have, near the same money that we do, so I think we're very close in that. Comparably wise, though, you guys' police budget is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand and mine is six hundred and fifty-two thousand. I'm not telling you you need to be more on my budgets, and I have more people, but they built things into my budget for police cars, they built things into my budget for the insurance, we've increased our insurance, we've taken care of those sort of things, and that's why I've been able to keep some of my people. We pay forty-eight thousand is what I have budgeted for insurance a year, which covers about a thousand dollar premium for my employees, and we pay up to five hundred dollars to our dependents. We're getting ready to increase that division in dental and put some other things on the insurance to increase these things. From my experience, that's one of the biggest factors in me retaining people right now, and it's what people are looking at more and more because insurance costs are skyrocketing, and they, they cannot pay for their own insurance out of pocket. It's, it's gonna be really hard if you guys don't work those things up and into your next program on that. But comparables on budgets, we are spending a lot more money on police, and part of that's my mayor's focus. She's focused on two things for our community, the big things that she wants to make sure of are water, so everybody has good clean water, and we have a police presence, and people are there and take care of things when they're needed, and so that's been her focus. I hope moving forward, that can be a focus for you guys, because you're gonna have to increase what you pay your officers, you're gonna have to increase what you pay your chiefs. That's just a, a bottom line, and if you don't, and you decide, ah, we'll hire this guy who doesn't have as much experience or training, you're gonna get a good experience in Springfield, where somebody's been hired that probably shouldn't have been a cop when they shoot somebody they shouldn't, and then you guys are gonna be on the hook for millions of dollars. I don't wanna see that as a position that you're in, because I, I don't wanna see that for any law enforcement officer, but I really don't like seeing bad cops in our job. None of us do that are cops, and we are doing a good job. We want people that are qualified and doing a good job. We have a great working relationship, we work with Brian all the time, he needs things, we come down here, if he, if we need something, he comes up there. We try to work with all the small communities around here, so I'd love to continue that relationship and make sure that we all are on the same page, and, and you guys get a good quality chief, for somebody who's gonna be up here to assist you and for us to work with, too. I can answer any questions you might have?
Do you guys have a residency requirement?
We do not, we do not. I live in Mount Zion. When I started, that was one of the things they asked me. I'll be honest, I've looked at houses in Malua before, and we had actually considered moving there a couple of different times, but we couldn't provide anything to accommodate our family. When I started there, I had just had a house fire, and I'd lived in my house about four months, and I told Sean, no way am I moving, and I barely got to live in my house, and it's getting fixed now, so I'd like to stay where I'm at, so. And before that, Brian McReynolds, our sheriff in Shelby County, who'd been our former chief, he lived in Shelbyville and drove back and forth. Doug lives in Mount Zion, not too far, actually, blocks from me.
Oh, okay. We, we have a fifty-mile radius.
Okay.
For residency for all employees.
Yeah, and I think if it was somebody living, you know, if I was living down in St. Louis or Carver Hills, obviously, yeah, that's a problem, but I think, you know, something like that, I think is gonna be very workable to get people to come in.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, the goal is to get a police chief first, and then we're gonna work on an officer, but yes, we do need to, and I know we kinda did that with PJ, so we can kind of keep a little bit of that momentum going, but those are definitely some things to think about for everybody. But we wanna thank you, and I, I thank Sean, I spoke to her the other day, sort of thinking everything, and they're there, I mean, anytime we need anything, Malua was there to help us, and we're there to help them for anything, so it's been a great rapport that we've had with them for, for decades, I mean, well, before probably any of, any of us was ever born, so.
Well, since, since schools are all schooled together, there was a lot more camaraderie down there.
How many years of experience have you had besides the three years at Malua?
I worked one year in the Macon County Jail from ninety-four to ninety-five, and then I worked twenty-six years in Decatur.
And so what is basically your pay as chief?
Right, in Malua right now?
Mm-hmm.
I think mine is seventy-seven five and benefits.
Brian's is comparable, Brian hasn't complained about his.
But Brian doesn't have benefits.
He gets, yes, he has benefits.
Does he have insurance?
No, he chooses a stipend.
He chooses, or you guys are choosing?
We don't offer, we don't offer benefits. We don't have no choice, we just give them a stipend.
And when was? That's, well, in the past, we used to offer people insurance. I just recently came on, they received a stipend, I assumed the employees wanted the stipend instead. And we have been discussing insurance. I didn't know either one of those were an issue with Brian.
I, I think it was an issue with PJ, too, that's why I ended up hiring him. I wasn't trying to steal people, but that was an issue with PJ, he wasn't getting the same amount of money, he got a four dollar an hour raise when he came up to me, and he got insurance.
Not PJ.
Jackson, sorry, yeah, I'm just, Jackson, not PJ, yeah. There was an issue with PJ, too, though, when he left, but he got a much bigger raise, quicker than Shelby County, it was like a ten dollar an hour raise, so that was a big raise for everybody, and I lost somebody to Shelby County Jail when I hired Jackson, I'd lost Isaac.
I heard Wade saying that, so you didn't hear him ask.
Yeah.
Well, with Jackson, we, I wasn't aware, though, that insurance was an issue until after he already resigned.
Insurance is an issue right now, I, I can just tell you from, it is, but it's specifically in law enforcement, and specifically when you have a job that people are not signing up for. When I started and when Doug started in Decatur, there were three or four hundred people testing to get on Decatur, and it was hard. Right now, they get lucky if ten people show up for a physical test, and then it's, when we're paying less and we have less benefits, now, there's less risk involved and less, you know, constant chasing your tail and running up calls as in Decatur, but when you're paying less, it's harder to attract people, too. So it just, it's a balancing act of trying to find that sweet spot of what's a good amount of money, what's a good amount for pay, and what's a good amount for benefits.
But actually, we're not paying less for a chief than what other people our size community are, are paying.
Pay-wise, not, but the benefits are what's killing you right now, in my opinion.
Not the other benefits, just insurance.
Yes.
He gets IMRF, he gets.
Yeah, yeah, and there are a couple of small communities that are not doing IMRF and doing some sort of 401K, and I can tell you with those, they're struggling.
We can't switch, we cannot switch.
No, I'm just saying, no, that's even worse.
Yeah, it is, I think it might be some reality, I think you go to court. We can't because it was put on a ballot, it was voted by the community.
Yeah.
And so we always have to stay with IMRF.
And that's probably a good thing for you, for hiring employees.
Yeah.
You don't believe IMRF.
Yeah, what you do, you're gonna have a hard time replacing people.
It's the only funded retirement fund in the state of Illinois. Yeah, it is fully funded, yeah. All right, so like I said, we'll do the compensation to the, to the city.
And the reason I've requested the compensation goes to the city is so that if it's billed to the city, the city then pays me, and then so I can justify coming down here in the middle of the day if there's something that needs to be done, rather than me, you know, say you had an emergency in paperwork or something needs to be done, then I don't have to leave my primary job there, come down here, I can just come down and handle things as needed, and I, I've kind of got the approval from the mayor on that. We have a board meeting next week, and it should get approved, and it should not be a problem, but.
I, I don't see it being, I mean, what do you think? Do you think there should be anything, I mean, you already have mutual aid.
I mean, well, it depends on where the fund's gonna go to and how much.
Well, it just goes to the city.
Yeah, it would just pay the city, and then they would pay any payrolls, and I don't have to worry about it.
So it's just a, a contract with the, with Malua. Yeah, that should be fine.
Are we, are we gonna do just the set amount or just do per diem like we're doing? No, we're gonna do a set amount, just do like the thousand dollars a month. Because we're borrowing your water. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, too, yeah.
Well, well, that's, that was kind of past practice on that. That's why I kind of said pro rate, because with Jack, he wasn't going to be, we, when we paid Louie, we did it a thousand dollars a month, but Jack was only going to be out for a few small days, and we, did we ever get anything from Scott yet?
Turned one in and then he wasn't sure about Jack, because I think Jackson will work a couple hours a day.
Okay.
So he's still helping out.
Still helping out, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
But I'm not hundred percent sure, I haven't talked to you for a while.
He's not paying for a check yet, so.
I think it's only a couple of days.
That's fine, that's, that's perfectly fine. All right, did you wanna talk now about what you were gonna say, Gary, or you, or you wanna wait till public com, uh, for older persons? I'll do older persons. Okay. All right, that's all that I have, we'll go to public comments. Everybody?
I guess I could make a public comment.
Oh, go ahead.
A strange employee, I guess, I've seen the board turn over a couple of times, so when Derek first joined city council, he did my interview back in twenty seventeen. I've been with Assumption PD since June, yeah, June twenty-second, twenty seventeen. But kind of to echo what they're saying, so I came from Maroa PD, which is a comparable-sized community, took a two-dollar payback, because I met this guy at training, and I was like, I like him a lot more than I like my new chief up there. So I took a payback and came here, and Brian's been a good friend, great chief, great work for. To kind of echo what, what's been said about the, the pay stuff, for example, when I was in Maroa from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen, in a time of stable economy, I got a seven and a half dollar an hour pay raise that I've never asked for, and then with all the inflation, everything's gone on here, in the last several years, I've been here for seven years with no pay raise, to the point where my three-quarter ton pickup truck is not worth driving thirty-eight miles back to my hometown Los Angeles to get on patrol, I have to do four hours to break even on fuel. So it's become one of the things where if I come over to work in Assumption, I do it as a favor to Brian, because we need coverage, or we need a range instructor and a firearms instructor, so I qualify the other agencies. But it's been something that I've done more as a favor of this guy, because he's been such a great chief and such a blessing for our community. So I think, I think we all know, whether, regardless of how you feel about law enforcement in general, I think we all know what a blessing we have in Brian, and I think we're all gonna miss him. And I hope that as you guys move forward, that we don't settle for less than what this community deserves, counting the others saying, I don't, we don't need somebody's leftovers, somebody that's not qualified to the job. And although pay is important, you can't pay somebody enough to care, like, you can't pay somebody to care about your kids, you can't pay somebody to care about your community, so.
Yeah, and on that, the attorney, I was kind of talking about this, well, and also the cops, there's more things that's coming out. The Saguam County, I mean, I, I saw it kind of on a news feed, Sherman's got a bad cop, so they passed it on to Saguam County, and it's come out, so. He used his taser at a birthday party, one of the things, I mean, he's like, come on. He was having fun, but still, you don't do that, so. You know, and I, I reached out to some people from Saguam County, kind of the joke was, oh, you don't want anybody from up here, I was like, now I know. But anyway, we're going to communications from the city attorney, what you got?
Well, to follow up on the notice being posted, that'll hopefully generate a response, but if it, if it doesn't, we'll start the process to do the organs violation action through the circuit board, a court order to do whatever.
There was a foul odor coming from the door, I mean, you could smell garbage at the door, yeah. Did they call you, did they come? They have never came to me or anything.
They didn't return my phone calls, so.
I don't know what's going on.
There's a little bit of a delay while we try to get Christian County involved, but they didn't, like you said, didn't return phone calls.
Usually come out the next day. No, never did.
He did, and he didn't say anything.
I mean, like I said, I got the notice, I got, sent the photo to the attorney, it's there.
So the other thing I wanted to pass along is we've got another notice from the EPA Water people, it's a different kind of notice, apparently the last quarterly testing, one of the parameters tested high, and so we need to send a notice out to, there's no health issue involved, and Jack tells me he thinks that the problem was to do that test, you have to flush the lines to get a good clean sample, and he didn't think he probably flushed it quite long enough. So hopefully, next quarterly sample, it won't be another repeated issue, but those will be going out to all water users, so you guys should know.
We're changing quarterly.
Yeah, so that'll be going out to, within, shooting for next one. That's, that's all I got.
What is it, the test of the high, do you remember?
What the crider was, uh, the four letters, T H M, right?
I, I have a trust.
Yeah, we all have.
We, we ran, well, I can tell you, we ran into the same, so, same situation at the church, since Kimber's putting in the daycare, we had to re-flush the waters, because we didn't, there's things that came back a little high. It wasn't the city issue, because we had them check, but we did have to, basically, the, the company that tested the waters, we need to let it run for about five minutes. And then they came back fine.
TT H M is what it's referred to, et cetera, or something.
Didn't we get a fine?
No, no, this is just a reporting thing for a public water supply, so this is just make sure everybody knows what's going on with their public water, and, yeah. So everybody's gonna have a copy of it, and probably everyone's going to, they're gonna give a copy of it.
All right, Treasure, you got anything?
I do, I have a few things.
Okay.
I'm going to do payroll next week for the city employees on Tuesday night, because I'll be on vacation from July through the sixteenth. Also, we have the. Also, we have the waiter, altar waste, uh, loan payments due for seventy-one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and four cents. That is due, uh, November sixth, so I'll be paying that, and, uh, the bills, we might have a few more bills come up because it's only the second, we still have to receive Verizon and a few other ones, monthly bills that we get, so. Just want you to know that we will have to pay those before our next meeting, but it shouldn't be too much, it shouldn't be a large amount.
It's just about the timing, the schedule.
So.
And I, and I say, if you guys, I mean, if you guys wanna see them or anything, you can say one of them to me.
No, I don't have any, go ahead and get them out.
Oh, you got any, Jeff?
That's it.
All right, older persons, Gary, oh, go ahead, Kim.
Can I talk to for Gary, because Gary has a positive thing.
Oh, okay.
Mine is, I just wanna say to Brian, I, I hate that you're leaving us, you're a great loss to the community. There was an Ashley Sadler, I believe is her name, but I understood you were leaving was because you were ready for a change. And then she informed me on Facebook that you were leaving because of your pay and because of benefits. I, I, that kinda upset me as an alderman that you never approached me on those situations, and some things I can't say because they've been said in executive sessions, and it can't be discussed yet. But you seemed okay with your pay when we were in executive sessions and, and, um, you expressed to us about how we needed to increase our pay. So we, we are listening to, to you, so I just want that to be aware, and people in the community knows that we are aware of things like the insurance being an issue, we're aware that the pay is low. But there are things that we cannot say because it's been in executive sessions. So it just upset me that in the community, one thing is being said, and when I assumed you were doing it because you were just ready for a change, and with our society, it's understandable that you may wanna change it, and, but you have children, they'll be going to college, I'm sure, and stuff, so I'm just a little confused on what, why you're really leaving. Was it because of a change or because of the pay?
I honestly don't have to answer that question, um, I feel like I shouldn't even have to answer that to you, you, you've been on the board a small, minute time of my career here.
Right.
Um, and, and so it's my personal issue, I'm leaving, okay? And we'll leave it at that, I, I don't know what people are saying, I don't have Facebook, I don't have social media, so I'm not gonna comment on anything else, okay? The people that I know that care about me, that are right here with me, they know why I'm leaving, okay, because I've expressed that to them.
You, but you expressed it to them, but not us?
Go ahead, fine.
I, yeah, I, I don't have to answer that question.
No, no, I would know.
So.
Well, you are a great loss to our community. So, and I hope you do well and are successful at your new job. I, I just wish I had known that there was more of an issue, and like you said, I have not been on long.
Thank you, Kim, uh, Gary?
So ironically, timing wise, this comes up kinda like what you talked about, and we have been talking about this for a couple months. So we, we've recognized for a while that insurance is an issue, um, so I have a friend of mine who actually is an insurance broker. So I gave him the approximate ages of all of our city employees, which is all the information he needed to run it. Um, he ran it through twenty-one different companies, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield came back the most affordable and the most reasonable with a cop, with a but. So it's seven fifty per employee, um, without, uh, Springfield Clinic.
Oh, Springfield, without Springfield.
Eight thirty-five with Springfield Clinic because there's a certain section of Blue Cross Blue Shield that still, um, is out of network with Springfield Clinic that they didn't settle all of it. He told me that basically to add a wife on, double it, um, and then you start adding kids, he said, you're in the twenty-five hundred dollar range for two kids. We currently do, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it seven fifty stipend?
Uh, they take home five eighty-six.
They take, like, take home fifty-six, so everybody's different.
So one of the, one of the main differences would be, instead of the stipend, the city could pay the employees' insurance basically at a hundred percent. They don't get taxed on it, they actually come out money ahead because they're not paying taxes on the year for that salary of that each month. The requirement is you have to have, um, seventy percent participation in the employees. So out of our five, as we have five right now, if one person declines, that's fine. If two people decline, we wouldn't be eligible for the group insurance, it's pretty much that simple. Now, how that works, though, if, if the person declines, uh, because they are on their spouse's insurance, that doesn't count against the seventy percent.
Oh, okay.
So it's seventy percent of eligible people. Then the size of the city makes no difference for rates, he said, if you got two or you got ten, he said, it's basically the same thing, he said, that's just what they offer, small plans.
Yeah.
And it would be through, through the broker, obviously, so that's kinda where we're at, he said the other ones were, he said the next one after that was over a thousand, and he said, and, uh, that came with a, was it five hundred dollars, I don't remember what the deductible.
Five hundred dollar deductible.
Was that out, thinking you'd go out of network? See, the thing about going cheap is that it restrains them, just like that was without Springfield Clinic. Springfield Clinic's one of the largest around here for specialties, doctors, so that's why it's cheap.
Well, it's only seventy dollars difference, and, and it's only because the one small section of Blue Cross Blue Shield didn't breed up when they went back to Springfield Clinic.
Yeah.
There's one specific plan, and he said ironically, that's the one that a lot of small municipalities use, and that's why Blue Cross and Springfield Clinic are still fighting over reimbursement. So, and he said, he said usually if it comes down to eight thirty-five compared to seven fifty, he's like, if you can get coverage for all your employees, you're not gonna squabble over a hundred bucks a month. He's like, you know, by the time you figure out the cost and everything involved, he's like, you just pay the hundred and thirty bucks and, and get the best program you can out of a million and some dollar budget. I didn't fight over five hundred bucks, it's not worth it.
One thing, if I was to interject on that, uh, what we're looking at in switching, we had to go to Health Alliance because we had so many people in West Springfield Clinic. So we're going to go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, so we'll have that same function area and same problem. Um, one of the things that we had found when we have, 'cause we have a few more employees that are on it, um, when we were adding employees who were twenty-two, twenty-three, just coming out of police academy, that really dropped our rates dramatically, uh, one of our employees didn't wanna be on it because he had good insurance through military and stuff, but had he been on it, it would've dropped everybody else's rates that they were paying for the village for like fifty dollars a month. So it depends on, you know, those are factors that go into, you know, 'cause we are top heavy on a lot of older people, and so that makes our, our billings go higher, yeah, so.
And that's why he, that, and that basically all he needed was a survey of the ages, he's like, that really is all.
And so, and, and adding kids to it, like you guys said, uh, is a factor too, that I have an officer who was paying quite a bit for both his wife and kids to be on our insurance, and it was a burden for him, so I went back to our board and talked to them, uh, about six months later, and said, can we do a five hundred dollar stipend to put toward families, to put toward second people on there? And that, that really eased some of that burden, and it's not that many people that you're doing it for yet, uh, you know, it's, you know, you have a minimal amount of people that are gonna have kids on it, you have a minimal amount of people that are gonna put their spouse on it because a lot of places at least provide for the employee, so.
Well, what, I mean, what it comes down to is also if you, if you aren't on your spouses and you declined it, you're not the stipend, it's either the insurance or no stipend, so.
Well, yeah, I ride, that is, it's either one or the other.
So we'll have to do, either every, basically everybody will have to do it, or you'll have to go on your spouses, or you, you basically would cost somebody else their insurance because you don't wanna.
Yeah, well, it's something we can further discuss with the employees of the community whole.
I agree, I think we need to probably sit down with everybody and just.
Yeah, at some point, once you get our facts together.
What do you have, what are you interested in?
That's kinda where we're at.
Thank you for doing that, Gary.
Yeah, thank you. All righty, let's get rolling for new business, we kind of already just did the discussion on the week of pride, please support on an interim basis.
Do you have any questions for me before, so?
No, I don't have any.
If nobody else has questions.
No, just thank you very much.
Yeah, I like voting for you, but, uh.
You got another week, what?
I've got another one next to me, and, so, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's your time.
Hey, I just, I wanna thank the board, um, those of you that have been here for us, for the police department, um, don't give up this police department, we put a lot of time in it. The officers truly care about the community, um, another thing, pay attention to your employees, they're not gonna come out and tell you flat out if they can get raises, or they can get insurance, or they can get, uh, all these things, okay? You have to pay attention to that, um, I do recall asking for one point five percent more because I knew Jackson was looking, okay? We know the, the, the managers of the city that truly do the work, Jack knows his people, Darren knows his people, I know my people. So you have to realize your most valuable asset for the city of Assumption is the employee, okay? So when you cut out simple things like Christmas parties, different things like that, that does factor in, okay? I'm not leaving for any other reason than I need insurance and state of Illinois, baby.
Yeah, so I, I understand.
You know, so, um, my, my goal was to retire here, but obviously with the economy, different things like that, um, that's where we're at, so. We realize as chiefs, we're a stepping stone, we, we talk about this all the time with all the local chiefs, we know the officers we get, that we send to the academy, they're gonna go for bigger, better things. I remember in a meeting saying the state police pays ninety thousand dollars.
You told us they had a sign-on bonus.
They've, no, I never said a sign-on bonus, they don't have a sign-on, but I'm not gonna.
Yeah, they're, but ninety thousand, yeah, ten of those losing a cop.
They're all out of, it's over there.
Champagne has a sign-on.
You care for the sign-on.
The K and champagne have sign-on bonuses, so, but that's if you wanna go there, I mean, you know, a lot of people like starting out. We see things here that I never saw in Champagne, okay, there's, there's crime here, but it's on a lower scale, so, but you need to have good proactive officers that care about the community, that care about the kids. Doug cares so much about the kids, Justin is fabulous, um, take care of them, or you're losing them. We're paying fifteen seventy-five an hour for part-time, I've asked for that for, I've asked for that until I don't even ask anymore. Derek knows too, I gave up raises to keep my people, okay, I gave up raises so we could keep PJ and Jackson, all right? So take care of your people or you're gonna lose your, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
All righty, rolling on, uh, we're gonna have a motion to approve the invoice for the sewer, uh, we got Petersburg Plumbing Dispersment, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. We have a Chastain's invoice, six eight eight six dash five eight, fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents, for a total of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seventy dollars and fifteen cents. Can I have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Ready, any discussion? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the sewer project change order, CO four, for eighteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-six, can I have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Porter?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
All right, next, we have a motion to approve the invoice for the water, uh, Water Main Project, uh, Petersburg Plumbing Dispersment, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-four cents. And Chastain's invoice, seven six four four point oh one dash two six and two seven, for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-six, for a total of ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Can I have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
All righty, up next, the motion to approve the invoice for lead service line replacement project, Petersburg Plumbing Dispersment, nine thousand, one hundred and six dollars and six and five cents, can I have a motion to approve those, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
All righty, um, Ron, do you wanna talk anything about the next item, the, to approve the thirty-five thousand per extra cost for Chastain Associates, anything to rebid? Have you just your work done, go ahead.
Sure, um, I brought this up at the, uh, committee meeting, um, a couple weeks ago, uh, when we, uh, had to take, you may recall, we, we bid the project once, and then, uh, we had an opportunity to get, uh, higher principal forgiveness percentage, so, uh, we had to bid the project again, in order to do that, I mentioned at the time, there would be an extra cost, um, involved to, for our engineering hours to do that, um, and then, uh, we also to date have, uh, incurred about twelve thousand, four hundred dollars in costs, uh, that are related to helping fill out, uh, grant applications and other, uh, correspondence for the, uh, EPA grant, so, um...